Okay, we're gonna start with another binomial, just a specific term. Um, don't follow. The only reason I ask this question is one time, uh, back when they used to format like twenty-seven short questions, like two to three pointers. This was a question one time, and then they only have five ten pointers, eight point questions, that's how they used to structure some. For five years, they structured it that way. And, um, it says, they would say, write, write it, but don't simplify. Uh, I don't know why. So, but this one, let's do, let's simplify it.
Okay.
So I want this one to be the m to the fifth term.
Okay.
Okay, a couple seconds.
Six, six.
Anybody can start speaking up on this, one more time to me.
Wouldn't it just be five and then thirty?
Five, well, hold on, so what goes here?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, and then which part needs to have a five?
The two M.
The two M needs to have a five on it because they just said m to the fifth. And then the negative three needs to have the one on it.
Thirty.
Thirty. And then what goes here?
Five.
Five or?
Thirty, thirty.
Why? Because it does not matter which of these you use because of how Pascal's triangle will work from both ways. And, um, as far as the expansion goes, like maybe let's just jump back to one we wanna expand. Um, did I expand every, oh, I didn't expand this example here, let's do, it's an easy one, but it still will help you with the formula. So here guys is example two, we didn't expand. So, inside the Pascal's triangle part, this goes five choose, and then you either need to start at zero and then count up, or five and count down. And it's just how the combinations work with Pascal's, the pattern. And so, every single term, I, if I started at zero, this would now turn into five choose one, and it would turn into five choose two. And because every individual term, anyway, we would continue, okay? Because every individual term does the same thing, like this counts down in degrees, or this one counts up in degrees. Because they do the same thing, you pick one and you just follow that pattern. And the formula would be the same, so let's go back to this one that we just set up. The formula, if we do it in our calculator, if we wanna test it in our calculator, would, or we, I'm just gonna show this by hand. Thirty-five factorial, oh, so this is for, uh, thirty-five choose five, okay?
And this is the formula we have to put in our calculator?
You can put it in your calculator or, as thirty-five, and then click the NCR button, and choose five. Or thirty-five factorial over five factorial, and then thirty-five minus five is thirty factorial. This is some of the PRB probability. But I wanna kinda show you why it doesn't matter whether you choose the five or the thirty, really quick. So, look at how these formulas are the same. Whether I choose thirty-five choose thirty, or thirty-five choose five. Um, the formula for thirty-five choose five was going to go in as thirty-five factorial over five factorial, and then thirty-five minus five is thirty, okay? Well, thirty-five choose thirty is also thirty-five factorial over thirty factorial, and then thirty-five minus thirty is five factorial. So, they work out to be the exact same formula.
Right.
And that's why it does not matter which one you pick.
Because of, yeah, because of that.
And these will always do that, they'll always add up to whatever degree this is, and so the math, it just, that pattern always works.
Right.
Okay, and then you would get what here?
Uh, thirty-two, four, six, three, two?
Thirty-two, four, six, huge numbers, right? And then that's times by two to the fifth, which two to the fifth is thirty, no, thirty-two? And then we have this m to the fifth still, and then a negative thirty to the thirty, which is a huge number. That's why we said not to simplify, we asked for the setup and stuff, because this is a huge number. But do you feel okay with having to?
Okay.
They would probably make you do like ridiculously sized numbers.
So the answer would be the big number I just said, times two to the fifth, times m to the fifth, times three, negative three to the third.
Correct.
And that's the answer?
Yes. It's that, it's that coefficient with an m to the fifth.
Okay.
Cool? That was ugly, that's why it's just a setup and stop. Do you want a full expansion before you jet?
Um, yeah, let's do one.
Let's do, do you wanna do this easier one, or do you want an uglier one? Like, one of these that we asked for a specific term, we could expand.
Let's do an uglier one.
An uglier one, okay.
Really, really fast.
I will be fast, okay, let's do this one that's a sixth degree. Cool? Okay. So, it's a sixth degree, so it's still gonna be quite a few terms, but you would write, uh, for the first term, we would put a six here, right?
Right.
We would put what here?
Uh.
Four X.
Yes.
Squared, the whole thing.
Right.
And then a negative one.
Does it matter if you put the negative one or the four X like flipped off at all?
No, cuz they're all just kinda times, but in regards to your pattern, I think to stay coordinated, I always have my first term start at the highest degree and go down. And I always have my second term start at zero and go up.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter what order, no, but it does matter if you started at a sixth here, that you don't mix up what's on the others.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this, since we're gonna start at a six, and this is gonna be the zero, I'm okay that you do six or zero here. And then just make sure you're consistent. So six will now choose what?
Five.
Five. Four X will now be, four X squared, I mean, will now be?
Five.
And then negative one will now be?
One.
And you got it, yep, you have the pattern. So we'll continue this process.
Ooh.
Four, um, you guys are okay, but I have a lot of writing. Uh, four, uh, negative one, what is that going up to? And this should always add up to what? These degrees?
Six.
Six, good. Oh, I switched up to the five. Sorry, y'all, I'm rushing. Did I throw you off, anybody?
No.
Okay. Six will now choose three, two, uh, oh wait, hell, okay, four, heck, sorry. Four X squared will now be a?
Three.
Gosh, I'm trying to hustle for you, three, thank you. Negative one, that will now be a?
Three.
Good. Six choose? Good, and you guys got it? So as far as the math works, you won't always have three numbers to times, but when that has a number, this has a number, and that has a number, then you'll have three numbers to times on every term.
Okay, and the fourth term would be six choose four? Yeah, no?
Did we go down in degrees? Six, five, four, three, two. What do you say about the fourth term? Oh! Oh, sorry, I was just pretending we were doing a full expansion.
Okay, okay, JK. Yeah, I deleted this line.
Yeah, I thought you wanted a full expansion, so this is us pretending we're asking for an expansion.
Okay, I get you.
And then, if we did ask for a term, you're correct, you would've gone six, five, four, three, so this would've been the one you picked.
Okay, sweet.
And then you would've just done that, so that was the question.
Yeah.
Do you feel better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, that's why, though, you're good. I was like, okay, I can hear at the door, and we're like, I'm messing up, and I'm very rotten, writing stuff wrong. Okay, and then, are you guys good on the pattern?
Yeah.
You two are both good?
How do you just put the factorial?
Are you gonna choose to do it that way instead of the NCR sometimes?
I couldn't figure that out, so I've just been doing the factorial.
So this is technically a combinations formula, and so, whatever that is, it would go in as six, and then click the NCR button. Six choose six.
So when you have to do like, when it's like, uh, um, oh wait, that's the same thing. Cuz like, if you did like six choose five, then you have to do like, uh, six factorial, uh, over five factorial, one factorial?
That's the same thing.
That's the same thing, it's just six choose five?
Yes, just because it's.
So you don't have to put the, like, your number in?
Have to, yeah. I want people to see why it ma- didn't matter whether you used that number or that number, but you can generally just say six choose six.
Okay.
Unless you, yeah.
That might be faster.
It is faster.
Got it.
Pascal's triangle on an expansion is pretty fast, if it's not too far. For instance, like, let's just write this out since we're here, and since we might as well practice. And I was videoing and said, hell, am I videoing, so now I gotta like cancel that. I'm like, hold on. Okay, so, four, heck, uh, four, three, what do I raise this one to? Oh, I have to raise it on. This one is raised to a?
Two.
Two, and then this is raised to a?
Four.
Four. Then we would say six choose one, and this would be raised to a one, and this would be raised to? Five, we sent one more spot. Six choose zero, four X squared, two zero, and then negative one raised to a six, right? So, this is also Pascal's triangle, and so if they ask you a n, that's a reasonable, reasonable n, if that makes sense, then I don't wanna do the formula seven times, I'm gonna use Pascal's triangle. So this top row is if it's raised to a zero, this is if it's raised to a one, and so forth. So two, three, four, five, so Pascal's will be one more later is all. One, what's this?
Six.
Six? Fifteen? Oh, hold on. Oh, that was my n, I'm like, that's just confusing. Okay, so now I get to say, oh, this would've been a one if I would've put it in my calculator, this would've been a six if I would've put it in my calculator. Fifteen, twenty, fifteen, six, and a one. And you can check that, you guys can check that you, that's correct, and check some of those formulas, yeah, that's how Pascal's triangle works. So then you guys would've got four to the sixth, and so forth, and times everything. Okay? Do you, you guys feel good, I mean, that one wasn't meant to expand, so it's kinda ugly, but, do you feel good, cuz I can't expand a couple?
Yeah, I was just confused cuz last year, I don't remember putting it in my calculator, but now, it came back, cuz we.
I bet they did it, yeah, because we never asked anything about the fifth, in fact, I don't even know if we asked anything about the fourth.
Yeah.
With Math three kids. Yeah, I need to answer probably this. So we were just teaching you how to do a specific term, though, and I don't wanna have to Pascal's triangle and then count out terms either. And I bet the test won't do something like a little fourth degree, I bet it might be like, either, we don't wanna keep going on Pascal's. So you might as well know the formula, but realize it's just a combinations formula.
Do you think they'll do a binomial?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that, uh.
If they don't, they'll do like a chain, instead?
No, I bet the last sequence questions and a binomial.
Oh, okay, because, oh, cuz we haven't tested on those yet.
We haven't tested on sequences, and we haven't tested on binomials, so I guarantee they'll ask those two topics.
So mostly gonna be like new stuff on the final?
No, not mostly, but I guarantee there'll be like two, I guarantee the last binomial, binomial, and some sort of sequence.
Okay.
For sure. And then the rest will be. Um, okay, do you guys feel okay about the new stuff? And then what do you want, do you wanna guide the, the plan, or do you just want me to chip away at a couple things we haven't talked about, that I feel like we probably could?
Could we go over on like how proving that two, like F of G and F of, or G and F, F are inverses?
Yeah, I would love to. Um, that's actually on the practice, so I am going to just actually pull that up, let me see. Let me make sure this is a. Oh, let's see, alright, here. I saw a bunch, I wish I would've divided this, but I didn't have time, so now I'm like. Yes, I posted this just today, and I think I showed you guys at the beginning of class to, like, it's just there underneath here, I'll show you where it is on Canvas. So, I have it under your WSU final module, and then there's the outline. These are just old practice ones that are old formats, but they're still great questions. I'll put our videos here. Um, I'm gonna rearrange that. Um, and then I put it right here, final exam, practice, reviews, and quizzes. And then here's that test bank, that you guys have already had access to. Let's see if the test bank acts and, asks an inverse, um, Abby, and then if it doesn't, I'll just keep scrolling to find something that's good. Oh yeah, I have to go to an old one, do you know what test the, the inverses was on?
I think it was on the first one.
You think so, okay. So if I go to our module, I'm gonna slide up to our first test, and pull some practice things. I should've had these ready, I kinda forgot that it had them all on separate banks, so. Why can't I see it? Oh, there it is. Okay, inverses. One-to-one and inverses. Find the inverse, given this, what if we practice finding an inverse, and then verifying they are? Or I can keep scrolling, and ver- I know there is one on these. Is that a good one, or can I, let me scroll one more second, and, cuz I know I saw one, and then I'll just give up, and. So what we could do is just scroll to things I know I haven't covered, after you guys ask for specifics. There's another difference quotient, ew, there's a graph, a polynomial. Hmm. You said inverses, I don't remember it being on the old exam one, but it must be. Hmm. Bummer, that was an extra credit thing. Okay, I won't keep doing this, I'll just like, ew, I do want to look at this kind of a question, but maybe. Okay, rate of change, ew, even on neither, we could review some of those too. We haven't looked at those. F of G. Huh, okay, I'll come up with my own. Um, let's just jump to this question. Right here. Here. Finding inverse, and, um, do you guys want the rational function one that's uglier, or us just, do you wanna do a linear one and then just confirm that? Or an ugly one?
Give it an ugly one.
Ugly one? Okay, two X plus seven, you remember two X plus seven, you remember X minus four? Okay, jump to the PowerPoint here. Okay, what was it?
Two X plus.
Two X plus seven?
X minus four.
X minus four, perfect. So we do, what's our first step? Consider this a Y, do what with the?
X and Ys.
Swap them.
Swap them, good. So inverses, this is what we were doing in class today. Inverses or anything, you know, where the Xs and Ys are swapped, as far as coordinates go, if there's a graph you're comparing, the Xs and Ys are swapped, they're reflective over the line Y equals X. So, the only thing that we were like, a little bit rushed on, is I didn't, I just told people, this is how you prove their inverses, but we didn't go back and like prove it. In fact, I could, at the same time, go and get that question we just did, and confirm it that way, but if you guys are okay doing it again.
Okay.
So here we go. X, Y, minus four X is equal to, what? Two Y plus seven? Do you guys agree? So we cleared denominators, right? And then we went ahead and distributed. So now I've cleared denominators, that's your goal, always like try to get rid of denominators. But now, when you wanna solve for Y, and it doesn't look like you can quite combine them, still get them to the same side, because you'll still be able to factor something out when you want to, okay? So, I don't care what side you take it to, and that's why sometimes your inverses will look a little different than each other, cuz negatives will be in different spots. But I like to just take stuff to my left side, so I'm gonna minus my two Y there, but I'm gonna move what? I'm gonna move the four X over here, perfect. Good? Now what would I do?
Factor out the Y?
Yep, now we have our Y finally isolated. So now, oh, I don't really did that, so now I've technically solved, because now I can divide. Good? So I have now just found F inverse. Now, the question, if they ask you a question, may not be finding inverses, maybe it will be, but they could ask you something even as simple as a true or false, are these inverses? And so I would just take it by looking at them, I would make sure I still plug them in. So, you guys can verify that things, and they might just say, F and G are these functions, confirm their inverses. So I would take this and plug it into that, and then take that and plug it into that. So I'm gonna first start with F of F inverse, and plug them in. So two, oops, two, with that plugged in, plus seven, and X, minus four. So let's take this, and replace right here with the four X plus seven over X minus two. So it's a composition question. What's cool about this is they can compare law, they can kill two birds with one stone, they can test you guys on inverses, and then they can test you on compositions. If you know how to compose. Okay, cleaning it up. Okay, this one turned out, did we solve that right? Two X plus seven, two Y plus seven, X Y minus four X. Uh, minus the two X over two Y, over, compare the Y. X minus two. Yeah, can't think of anything I did wrong. So. Two, and then I plugged in four X plus seven. Right, I can't think of anything I did wrong, can you guys? Alright, let's clean it up, and see if it simplifies to X again. Um, whenever you guys run into uglier ones like this, I hope that they do ask you to verify its inverse, it's not like this, I mean, I hope that they do. So, don't be too scared, cuz I bet they will.
I hope they would like really, really, you know, challenge it.
I would take the time to maybe like clear denominators. Remember how I just talked about on that strategy when we were doing a difference quotient, and whenever I have fractions within fractions, I try to get rid of the fractions. So, if I were to times this numerator by X minus two, and then this denominator by X minus two, I think it would clear our fraction within the fraction. That's the strategy, is to get rid of them. So when I take it to this term, view this as a term, right? The X minus twos will cancel, so I'll be left with the two times the four X plus seven. Feel like I've copied something over here wrong, cuz this isn't the idea that I anticipated. That's good, oh, I forgot to distribute it here, and distribute it there. Okay? Take it to both terms. Now take it to both these terms, they're gone, I'm left with four X plus seven. And then we'll clean it up, and let's hope for X again, okay?
Wait, so when you have like two, and then the four X plus seven over X minus two, you don't have to times the two by X minus two?
I waited, I could've made this eight X plus fourteen over X minus two, and it's gonna be coming now.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I waited, but you could've.
Mm-hmm, but it doesn't matter.
Hmm, doesn't matter. So this is gonna become eight X plus fourteen, plus seven X minus fourteen, and that's gonna become four X plus seven minus four X minus? Plus eight, it looks like? I must've gone mess up. See? Um, I get fifteen X, plus and minus fourteen go away. And it's working, yay, fifteen, and the Xs go away, and I'm just left with X. I kept getting nervous, that we were like, gonna be left with something real ugly. That's how you prove ugly ones are inverses of each other. And then, technically to verify, you have to actually do both. Um, so we would now verify the other way, and continue, but I'm a little bit out of space, so if you wanna see it, we'd have to go to a different slide. But now we would take F inverse, and plug in F of X to it, and hope for the same thing. So I would take this four times two X plus seven over X minus four, plus seven, and then this, X, two X plus seven over X minus four, minus four. And we would do the same process, essentially. And just verify that you get X when you're done. Do you wanna practice another, or do you feel like that first one was okay?
Yeah, I think that helped.
Kayden, what about you?
Would it be minus four or minus two?
Did I miss it? Oh, thank you for correcting, fixing that. Yes, I love when you guys catch it, because it's just me. So I needed F of X. That's kinda why I do what I did on this one, did you guys see how I wrote two X plus seven, and then X minus four, then I plugged it in? That's why I do, and I do it that way if I were testing. Like, I was just trying to rushing it here, but like, if this was a test, I would've wrote four parentheses, plus seven, and then parentheses minus two, and then I would plug stuff in, and I'll kinda screw up, cuz I did mix up, so. Okay, um, like I said, we will end up and get an X equals this, if they really are inverses, and if you found it the right way. Cool? Okay. So like a verify that they are inverses. Alright, anything else before I just start chipping away at some more stuff?
Can we do like a, um, like the P over Q thing?
Finding zeros?
It's like, consider the polynomial, you have to list, yeah, the zeros.
Yeah, do you want me to do that one or a second one? Different one? Let me look at that. So this is finding zeros for polynomials that aren't factorable, right off the bat. So being a habit, if they say zeros, see if it's factorable. Um, if, if it's a graphing question, factor it first. If it's already factored, great, that's a plus. The factored ones are a little harder to get the Y intercept, unless one of your intercepts is at zero, but, anyway. Um, okay, I always would see if it's factorable, how I know it's not factorable? Cuz when I take out and factor by grouping, what should happen here if it's factorable? These should be the same. So, that's my first indicator, that I know I have to do that P over Q process, and find all the zeros a different way. And so, you take all your potentials, your potentials come from taking all of your factors of your constant for on top, which that one's gonna be one and three, and then you put all your factors of your, um, your leading coefficient. So I call that my P and that my Q, which is one and two. So this one's not bad, because they're all prime and, it's really nice. So I always start by doing one over one, three over one, so I always start by listing my nice whole numbers first, and then I go through and put them all over two now. So, plus and minus one over two, and plus and minus three over two. So we have potentially eight. Do you guys remember that rule that allows us to possibly know if we should test the positives or negatives first?
Put like a negative X?
We can first look at the original, though.
Oh.
And see if there's any sign changes. So it started positive, let me erase the circles if you guys don't mind. They just kinda get messy. Um, it started at positive, switched to a negative right here, and then stayed negative, and switched back to a positive. So that tells me as far as my positive rationals, that I might only have two or zero positives, sorry. So, I'm like, gosh, do I test my positives, or do I? Luckily you don't have a huge list, so pretty low risk to see it go on, to be honest, I'd probably just start getting going. But, to answer your question, Abby, when you were like, do I do a negative, not answer your question, but what you had just said. If you do plug in a negative X, which is the same process as finding if things are even or odd or neither, by the way. Um, I would rewrite this as a negative two X cubed, cuz that one would change. That one would not change, cuz it's an even, do you see that? What would happen on the seven X? It would, it would be a positive seven X, and then the three won't change. This did help me, though, because I see only one sign change. So I am positive that I should try my negatives first. Just because I know I'm gonna have a negative. So, test negative one, negative three, negative one half, or negative one third. So, do you remember what you do here, Kayden?
Uh, you don't make the little thingy?
You do synthetic, is that what you mean by thingy? You do synthetic division, and you're essentially dividing, you're essentially, when I'm trying to find negative one, you're essentially dividing X plus one into this, is what you're doing.
I was just confused on like the beginning.
Good, so you know what to do from here now?
Yeah, cuz I would always get confused on Q and P.
Okay. Good, and then Abby, do you need to finish this one, or do you feel good about this process?
I think I'm good.
Okay. If, so you guys do know, once you find one that work, you take this reduced polynomial and find the rest of the zeros.
Yes.
So it's just, essentially, a roundabout way to get it to a form-looking factor, or do the quadratic formula. Cool? Awesome, we're gonna go ahead and just move on if you need it. Um, do you guys care about, so while we're talking about polynomials, do you guys need anything, I'm just checking out my list. Do you guys need anything with polynomials on graphing? A polynomial? Let me go back to this outline real fast. So based on my outline, and I think right here about polynomials. So, right here, polynomial functions, it looks like you guys would know how to find zeros if you had to, find the roots and stuff, could you graph them? And we did it today briefly, why did we do that one? Oh, we were also solving an inequality, so I heard and had you graph a polynomial. Oh, we were also solving an inequality, so I already had you graph a polynomial. Do you want to practice more graphing, or are you guys good that we move on from polynomials?
Uh, could we do like an oblique one?
Yeah. Oh, rationals, so those are rationals. Yeah, we can do a irrational graph. Let me see if I can find an oblique one. So, polynomials are the ones that are smooth and continuous. They should have no peaks, no valleys, and they have the op, the end behaviors. And then rationals are the ones that have asymptotes. Okay? Alright, let's go ahead and find a graph of a rational function. I think I had one. Um. Here's a polynomial to graph. Would you, uh, what would this one look like? What degree would this one behave like? Actually, let's do this before we go to rationals. This is a good one for the home people. Um, let's do this, then we'll go to a rational's graph, then we'll just consider graphing, good. Um, I'm on graphing. I don't think we went over graphing enough. No, we did, we did a, kinda did. Okay. Graph this polynomial, make sure all of your intercepts and the end behavior are properly shown.
Yeah.
Pretty obvious. What would be your guys' starting point on a pol? So, the rational one we're gonna do has asymptotes and X intercepts. And all intercepts, and this one has just intercepts, right? No asymptotes. Okay. So, give me all your, uh, your intercepts. We wanted, let's do X and Y intercepts if there are a Y intercept, if there is a Y intercept. You know, it'll be like.
Zero, negative two, two.
Good, looks like we have one at zero, zero, negative two, zero, and positive two, zero. Good. What else do we, let's go see if we have a Y intercept. Normally, we'd plug in a zero to our Xs, but what were we gonna notice?
Zero, zero.
It's a zero, zero, good. Um, let's worry about our power function, so we can decide the end behavior. That's the next most important thing. When things are written out in standard form, they're way easier to see the power function, right? So, how do we determine the power function when it's not in standard form?
You just add all the X and Y's.
Good, and you need the potential, what else?
The X.
We need the, the number though, the leading coefficient. So, I kinda come up with my power function, and I look at this, and I'm like, oh, it looks like it's gonna be a negative X to the what? One, two, three, four, five. So, since it's gonna behave like a negative X to the fifth, I graph it like it's a negative X to the fifth. So, what do negative odds behave like?
Up, down.
Starting up, dropping to down, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Cool. Okay, next, you want to know the behavior as you come to all these intercepts. So, as you come down, let's start graphing this just for fun. As I come down to this intercept, is it gonna bounce, or is it gonna cross through here at negative two? Why did you say bounce? Good, it's gonna be an even multiplicity, so it should kinda bounce off of that, right? And then, who knows how high? You guys are welcome to plug in negative one and see where. Um, but, when we come back and circle back to the zero, should we bounce or cross? We should cross. So, I'm gonna come back down and cross, cross through. And then, who knows how low? And then, as we come back to here, we should what?
Bounce.
One thing in the rubric is that nothing is, has points or cusps or anything. They expect it to be a smooth and continuous graph, because polynomials are all rails, so I shouldn't have any points discontinuity or weird peaks. So, I do ask that you guys, it has always been on the rubric, that you have a smooth and continuous graph. No asymptotes, no peaks, and weird stuff. Like, I'd clean that up if I had a pencil on my desk. Does that sound good, everybody? Okay, now, let's jump to, because they're so similar, let's jump to the rational next. That was a good one to kinda quickly talk about. Um, difference quotient we talked about today. Domain. Ooh, piecewise, we have looked at in a minute. I like this, these practice problems. Do you remember where I saw that rational? Do you guys have a rational you want me to do? Not really.
How is this one?
You have one? You wanna do it?
Sure.
Okay. So, um. Okay. Grab a, do a rational. And I can even go to the other one, the other version, and do it a second time with negative two. This is actually from our exam number two. And, um, to graph this rational, ooh, pink is messing with my eyes. It looks like it's an X squared minus an X minus a six over X. And we had just done a nice one that had a horizontal asymptote today. So, this one has other things. Um, let's go through the key things we want. We always want all intercepts, right? So, we want both like the X and the Y intercepts, let's just do this. X intercept, Y intercept, let's figure out what that is. Let's figure out our vertical asymptotes, and then our non-vertical. So, we gotta decide if it's a horizontal or oblique, right? Or plain down, we know it's an oblique, but. Alright, let's go through all those details and how you get all this information. I always write, we said this today, I always write this what? In the two forms, which is. Yeah, hold on, yes, we're gonna set it equal to zero, but I always leave it in like the, the standard form, and I also write it in factored form, and then that way I can find everything really nice, okay? So, I already rewrite these to make one look factored and one look standard form. So, do you know what the numerator would factor to?
Negative six and one?
Uh, needs to add up to a negative one.
Negative three and two.
Very good. Good. So, the reason why we do this is this one's really nice to find my X intercepts. Where's my X intercepts at?
Uh, three and negative two.
Yep, three and negative two, which we might as well just shrink bottom while we do them. And then, it's also really easy from factored form to get the vertical asymptote. Where's our vertical asymptote at?
Zero.
Zero. What do you, what do you, do you guys know what happens when you guys find a vertical asymptote at zero? What does it, what do we not have now? We don't have a Y intercept anymore. Because when I try to go find it, and I choose to plug in a zero to my Xs, so this form is what I like to find these other two things from. When I go to plug in a zero here, and here, and here, I get six over a zero, which is actually an empty set, which means I don't have a Y intercept. And don't mistake that for when it's reversed. Like, if I get a zero over six, then yes, I do have a Y intercept at zero, so don't mistake the two. This one would be undefined, or this one would have a Y intercept. Okay, so there's a difference. Okay. Um, oblique. So, when we look at this. When we look at this, we realize that it's top-heavy, so we have to calculate our oblique asymptote. So, I realize when I go to divide it out, it's not gonna approach a number. It's not, it's not gonna approach zero, it's gonna approach something X, because it's top-heavy. So, then we go through the work to divide X into, um, X squared minus X minus six. Do you guys wanna go through this division process? Divide it in, first into first, leaves me with X, times it down, and I'm left with X squared. What's this next step? Subtract it, right? Bring down everything else. Okay, now, I divide that first into this first, and what am I left with? You said what? Negative one. So, now, I times that down to get a negative X. Subtract everything, or switch signs, I'm now negative six, and X cannot go into a negative six, so that's considered my quotient. Negative six is now my quotient. And I get to just take the equation of that line. So, let's go ahead and, um, that would, that asymptote would have a Y intercept at negative one, and then we would go up one over one, up one over one, down one over one. And we would just continue drawing this asymptote. Okay, good so far? As I put this together, you guys treat this just like you did your guys' inequality. You put your critical numbers on a number line and decide where you're above or below. Um, this one actually is really easy though, because I know I have an intercept. So, like, I know I'm probably in this region, because I don't cross this, but we didn't test if it crosses that, so you maybe wanna do, test it really quick. So, I would take this, and I would take my X minus one, and just double check that it doesn't cross this X squared minus X minus six. By the way, we would factor and see if there's any holes first. Do you guys remember that step? How do we know there's a hole? I asked on our quiz. Yeah, if things cancel, then that's the X coordinate for your hole, and you plug it into the result to get your Y coordinate. Okay? We don't have a hole though. So, let's go ahead and test this, and see if it crosses and if it ever equals. So, I would times my X out of my denominator, and it looks like I get X squared minus X, and then X squared minus X minus six. Do you guys understand that I took the asymptote, and I, I was asking myself, does it ever equal it? You with me? So, I just times that out, and now, when I try to bring these together, my Xs are gonna cancel, and when I try to bring these together, they're gonna cancel, and I'm actually left with zero equals negative six. So, that proves to me it does not cross. So, the fact that I have to have an intercept here lets me know that I have to approach those asymptotes. When in doubt, plug something in though. Go ahead, and you can take your critical numbers, and you can say, alright, negative two, um, zero and three, and I can test them. Like, I could plug in a one and decide that when I plug in, uh, F of one, I get a one minus one minus six over one, so I can tell it's negative. So, that tells me I'm gonna be coming down and approaching this asymptote. And the way I drew this was actually poorly drawn, I needed to make this, because I have to approach asymptotes. So, this needs to be way, way zoomed out technically, but oblique asymptotes, or sorry, the non-vertical asymptote is what your graph has to approach horizontally. So, even though it may not, it may not be getting close way, way soon, that's approaching this asymptote, and this is approaching that asymptote. Does that make sense? Now, since my vertical asymptote has an odd degree, I'm pretty dang sure it goes up there then, since this one comes down here. I also know for a fact that I can't cross that asymptote. So, like, you use all those, and like those, your analysis skills, like knowing you can't do this, you can't do this, to put it all together, and she come together nicely. So, just to make sure of like, what's the behavior on the sides of it, of stuff, and some more points, and all of those should go into account when you're putting your, putting your sketch together. You still okay? I can't imagine them having the time to ask you something crazy. So, I think, based on the skills you have, find these four details, test your intervals, and you have it. Okay? Okay, anything specific that you guys want? I can just start chipping away at my, my topics then, if you want me to. You guys okay with that?
We do a half-life?
Uh, like an exponential growth decay? Yeah, with the, the. Does it have to be a half-life, or do you just want it to be any exponential thing? Because the half-life is just that they give you a condition. But you want it to be specific to half-life?
Do you think they'll ask a half-life?
I don't know, they just, half-life can be used as a condition, but it can also be used, once you have a rate, as just a number. So, like, view half-life as me saying, how long till something doubles? Or, view half-life as me saying, the half-life of this is five thousand years. It's the same thing as me saying, in five days, the population of the scales grew to this. It's the same thing as like knowing how to create a rate. Does that make sense? So, if they're using half-life or numbers they give you as a condition, use that condition to come up with a rate. Once you have a rate, you have a haul. Okay, so that's what really threw you guys off on ours, is not realizing that at that time, I had, on my quiz, I had given you guys a different condition to come up with your rate, and then I used half-life as just a number that it dropped to, right? The radioactive substance. They use half-life as a condition, and you need to use that to find a rate. So, it just totally depends. So, let me give you something so that you're like, having to decide how it's used. I'll try to find a half-life too. Um, give me one second to go to their test bank first and see if it's a better one. Um, do you guys remember what test it was on if I go to their test bank?
Of the half-life?
Mm-hmm.
It was the most recent ones.
It was the most recent, so three. So, let me pause the video for one second. Okay, a bacteria culture contains two hundred and fifty bacteria. Um. If the number of bacteria grows to three hundred and five hours, see, they're doing too much, they actually, so. But I bet they wouldn't say, find the growth rate. Does that make sense? They would say, a bacteria culture contains two hundred and fifty bacteria. If the number of bacteria grows to this in five hours, how long will, how long will it take for the population to double? This is the same thing as me saying, how long till something reaches its half-life? Does that make sense? Um, or, if they had said, this part, the half-life is blank, that's your condition. If they give you half-life, use it as your condition, okay? So, they're all very, very, very similar, just how they ask it. So, how would you guys handle this problem? Because if I wanna know how long till something doubles in size, which is like five hundred where I started at, two fifty, which I could've just put two, I, they are asking for T, but I don't know K still. Does that make sense? Like, you guys will start to solve the question they're asking, and you'll realize you have too many unknowns. That's how you'll know that you have to use a condition. Where a lot of people will panic, and they'll still put five here. And I'm like, why would you put five when we just asked the question, how long? Does that make sense? So, try to step back for a second and relax, and say, oh, they told me a special condition, and this is gonna guide me to find my K. Okay? And so, because we want to essentially come up with a model, um, essentially, um, to go off of. Alright, if I knew that two fifty can go to three hundred in, how many hours? In five hours, that's gonna help me find the rate that this specific bacteria is changing at. Okay? And so, if this was a decayed problem with half-life, this, this would be going down. It would start, and then it would be going down, because radioactive substances go decay. Okay, so this is a growth, where it's bacteria, but radioactive decay would be down. Alright, we would do what to solve? Divide by two fifty, divide by two fifty. So, we would get, uh, thirty over twenty-five, six over five, I'm just gonna leave it at that. You guys okay with that? Um, how do I get rid of my E? L N it, so convert it to an L N. And I L N the E, that's gone, and then I do what? Divide by five. So, now, we have our rate. You are more than welcome to get that decimal and go as many places out as you can, or I just use exact. That's what I do. So, then, now I have a rate, like, here would be my model. Initial E to my rate, which you guys could give it for me, or I'll just do this. T, now, here's my model, Y equals, I guess I should say, or, or whatever. If they, if they gave you a variable to use, use it, okay? So, now, I have a model, and now, I can answer the question they're asking. How long will it take for the population to double? So, I get to say, put five hundred here, I get to put my rate I just found right here. L N of five six over five, and now, I get to solve for the T. So, what would we do? Divide it. L N, or convert to L N. And then, divide that. And then, we'd be able to have our T. What would you guys get if we put that into our calculator? Let's just try it. Did I write something wrong? Oh, six fifths.
Negative.
I'm sorry, it's six fifths. See what I did there? Did you guys see how I like, fraction, I was just mixing or something like that? Need it to work. Fix that, six fifths, we were just showing you it was a decay for a second. Because I was being a dog. Six fifths, okay? Try that again. But I did like that processing, right? That you were like, wait, wait, wait. That's not right. I forgot to put parentheses around this L N, because I'm dividing by that whole thing. And that will throw up your answer. So I gotta figure that out. What'd you get?
Nineteen.
About nineteen years?
Nineteen point like oh one.
Do I still put in here five, six, seven, eight? Oh, five hundred twenty-five, five hundred twenty, wait, no, dates.
I got, I got that too.
Yeah, nineteen, okay. Not years, what's this bacteria in?
Uh, hours.
Oh, percent.
So if it was like a half-life, it would be like, how long will it take the population to shrink or something?
Half-life is usually radioactive substances.
Right, would it just be half of two fifty?
Yeah, if I was talking about half, like something went down, like the population was declining somewhere. And I said, um, how long till the population's half? Then I would've put one twenty-five there.
So you take the culture, continues over.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then like the question you guys were asked.
Because I think I would always do the, you know, half of the.
Well, how was my quiz? My quiz was like, was it, let's, let's take, look at this one. So looking at your guys' tests that you guys, um, just took. Let's see the wording a little bit. It says, the half-life of the substance is blank. Suppose we have sixteen milligrams. So, what this is saying for you, they gave you the idea to come up with a model. And so sixteen e, and you don't know rate, right? You would say, you could've said sixteen to eight to find your rate. And because they said sixteen hundred years, or you could've said, how much till a hundred percent is one half? You guys could've found your rate both ways. You could've used what they gave you for the model, like sixteen years for the model. You can just say one and one and a half. Anytime they say that. So if they give you half-life in such a way that it's a condition, then you need to find r first. Now, the way my quiz was asked, do you have your, my quiz handy at all? If you don't, it's okay. I asked my quiz in a different way. I had said to you...
So this one, number three or three?
Yeah, I had said to you on mine, oh, was that for quiz four? But I could, I could... Yeah, you have it?
I don't know.
I can kinda remember and give you like a vague idea. I think I had said to you instead, the radioactive active substance was like forty percent after five days. So one drops to point four after five days. Do you, is that what I had said? Yeah, after four days, oh, not five days. After four, four days, after four days, a specific radioactive substance was forty percent of its original. So I went from one hundred percent, which is one, to point four. And so then I used that condition to get my, my rate essentially. So it was L N of point four divided by, uh, like four. So now I know my rate. So then later, when I said to the, I said, what's the half-life of the material? That's saying, what's our t? How long till it's half is another rate? Can you work that? So I did it in such a way that half-life wasn't asked as a condition, wasn't given as a condition. It's actually passed now. So now I wanna know when one hundred percent is point five. But I now have my rate. And then we just said, how long, or how, what is the half-life? So you're solving for t in this. You guys still better about that? Try to reason through the question? Hopefully that one rocked up people's roll, we're all just gonna ease it now, because we don't wanna like focus on it. Alright, what, what next do you want? Need to try to go over. I love, we did our exponential growth and decay, which is what I wanted. So the only thing I have written down here that we haven't gone through is checking that you would remember even on either questions. And the matrix C unit that we just tested on, on systems. Um, oh, the sequences I feel good about. And, uh, you guys know how to plug them into an explicit formula? Do you know recursive formulas, okay? How to use prior terms? And do you remember? I, want me to scroll through that thing and stop with some things I want? Okay. Point out, stop, like, stop with that one, I like that one. Otherwise, I'm just gonna kinda scroll through and make sure we feel confident in some things that I wanted to cover. I did, I did wanna go through some domain questions, but nobody was asking about them. Do you guys like want to at all? You do?
Could we graph a log if we do a domain?
Yeah, why not? Yeah, let's go ahead and, um, do you wanna graph one with more transformations than this? Or just hurry and throw this out there? We can expand and plug in, I think. Let's see if there's a better one to graph. Yeah, let's just graph, or let's just like look at that one, and then we'll just kind of remember what kind of logs like, look like. I think it's okay. Um, we couldn't be asked, I have another domain question that has radicals, and another one with irrational functions. So we'll just quickly go after those.
Okay.
Um, anytime they ask for the domain of something, our, our four domain restrictions are fractions, radicals, radicals in the fraction, and a log. Those are the four, okay? These ones, we say x what?
Can equals zero.
Can you, so it equals zero. We say these ones have to be or equal. And then this one's a strictly greater, and this one's a strictly greater. Sound good? So those are all of your domain restrictions that you guys may have to be able to decide. Okay? This one, because it's a log, I state, two x minus five has to be strictly greater. Good. So we would add a five and divide by two. But I ask for it to be in what form? Interval form. So we would say... What do we say? Five has infinity? You guys okay with those type of domain questions?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Okay. Let's glance at, what were we just looking at? Again, I wanted to just scroll. Is that what I kinda wanted?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see if there's anything we've skipped that I really want to cover. I feel good about absolute values. Um, can you guys substitute if they ask, and evaluate if asked? Add and subtract if asked? Here's, oh, here's the domain questions I was asking for. So, oh, there's the rational difference quotient I was looking for earlier. That's okay, I made up my own. So what would you guys say on these different domain restrictions? We just did a log, and now we have the other three that I just talked to you about. So let's just, like, go through them all. What would we say on this one? Three x plus one. It needs to stay greater than zero. What would we say here? Not just x.
Two x minus three, can't.
Good, so find out what makes it zero. And then what would you say here?
Greater than or equal to.
Seven x minus ten has to stay greater than or equal to zero. And solve them all else.
Is our one just greater than because it's in a fraction?
Correct. So this one switches to strictly as soon as it's a domain, because you have to encompass both these. You get that? Okay. We've already gone over difference quotients, so let's not spend any more time on those. Um, are you guys okay with just analyzing a graph? I feel like a lot of us could just do domain and range by looking at stuff, if you guys don't mind I skip. Um, let's skip this often, yeah, is this even, odd, or neither? And how do we know? Good, you say even because when you plug it in, they would both stay, right?
Yeah.
Good, so you guys know even, odd, and neither. Um, difference quotients were good. Evaluating from maybe a table, would you guys be okay? Like, if I was asking for two f plus g of one, you would go to... It's technically two f of one plus g of one, right? So f of one is what number, do you guys know? Go here to x equals one and find f of one. So what'd you say? Four, yeah. So we would've here said, two times four. And then what would you add that to? Kayden said six, yep. I'm gonna go shut that door. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then it's asking you times, divide, you guys are good? Okay, uh, let's keep going. Uh, quick glancing at twenty-one, even, odd, and neither. What would you guys say just on the fly? Is this even, odd, or neither? Even, because they're both even, right? Neither. It is odd. This one would stay, so it's this one that determines it. If this changes at all, it's neither. But if this stays, then you look here. And this would turn it negative.
Does like having a square root would have to do anything?
It does. It means your square root has to stay the same for it to be even or odd.
Okay.
Yep. So inside your square root would have to have an even function essentially.
Even, the whole thing's odd.
Okay, yeah.
How is it neither?
Which one?
Maybe you also need it.
Neither? Awesome, let's go through it. So taking g of negative x, that one would stay negative. This one would switch. And that one would stay. So since it is neither the original, because g of x would, is that, but it's also not a negative, so for it to be an odd, it would have to be like, uh, positive x squared, negative four x plus three. Like every term would've had to switch signs for it to be odd.
So it's only one change, it's neither.
Correct. If, if, pretty much on polynomials, they're the easy ones. Like every term would have to be odd, every term would have to be there. Okay, oh, I like this question. Um, it's a domain question, and I'll, I'll feel good with domain if we just move on after this. But, um, if I have a function and the domain, they already told you, is x squared or equal to six, this is supposed to say such that right there. And the function blank has a domain that x is such that squared is equal to four, find the domain of f plus g. So it's us realizing on plus minuses, do you take both f and g? Or do you just take what was? So composition is just what you plug in, right? What do you do with these ones?
Take the function of it? So you take the x minus six?
You actually, because we gotta take f's domain and g's domain and the answer's domain. Now, the answer would just be this plus this, so it wouldn't add any restrictions. Division ones add restrictions, but this one doesn't, okay? So now you think of it this way, Kayden. So when you said, but maybe I misunderstood you, so you could correct me. But it's saying your domain is above six, but it's also above or equal to negative four. But which one encompasses both, since you have to take in consideration both f and both g? Just the six. Just the six and up. So x has to stay above or equal to six only. So what they don't want you to do is just be like, oh, I'm supposed to take both domains, it's both. They want you to realize which one encompasses both. It has to be f and g's domain, and this is the only part that is for both of them.
And if it's like an f of g, then you use...
Yeah.
G and the answer?
Yep, if I was asking for f of g, you would've taken g's domain, which is which one? X is greater than or equal to negative four. And then, once you compose them and figure that out, you take the answers only and not f.
And not f. Which doesn't matter for this one.
Doesn't matter. Yeah. Good. Okay, question. Okay. Um, I don't know what they're gonna ask as far as the combining functions, but we've covered it really well. However, we've covered it. Okay, um, these ones aren't really, that's the same type of thing, same type of test. So I'm gonna keep scrolling. Transformations, if they ask it again. Are you guys okay on transformations? If they ask another transformation question? Okay, I feel like we know transformations really good. Um, domain again. Okay, that test is pretty good. I think we're good on the, their old, uh, test. We used to offer so much for them to do, and it's just so much work. Quadratics, we're okay, I think we're pretty good at quadratics. And, okay. Moving on. Um, you, did you, we already, we graphed a rational, right? Do you feel pretty comf- comfortable? This one would be oblique or horizontal? Good, so you'd have an oblique asymptote. Good. What if they asked you to solve a polynomial that is not already compared to zero? And you would have to distribute to clean it up, right? And then factor again. So don't panic if you're like, but it's already factored, too bad. You have to minus the four and then re-factor stuff. Okay? Um, are we good with graphing rationals if I move on? Okay. Um, polynomials, we should be good. Finding the quotient is just long division and just write the quotient part. Um, we did possible zeros already. Uh, we done different quotients. I'm gonna skip some of these, because I feel like we've covered them in other areas. Can we evaluate piecewise if they asked it? Do you guys feel pretty good there?
Yeah.
Awesome, this is so good. As you guys go through, you feel like, oh yeah, I got that, oh, I got that. Why is this asking more composition? Um, we've already done rationals, I feel confi- okay. Now we're doing some logs and stuff. Um, we, we covered these really well to study for the last test. Do you guys wanna just go over a log and an exponent and call it good? Oh, we didn't end up sketching our graph, did we?
Yeah.
What if we talk about this one really fast and just refresh our memory on the graphs, okay? Um, and because it's, uh, got a domain restriction and needs to stay above five, so x is above five, that is where your parent function on logs, if you remember, had an asymptote of zero. And if you remember, this is technically, um, like, if you wanna plug in before the shift happened, like just a log of x, that's a base ten, okay? So at one, you'll always have a zero there. And then if I plug in, um, sorry. You can generate your apparent values by plugging in like a one and then whatever the base is. I just do those as my main ones. You could even do a one tenth, because that would be a negative one if I plug in a one tenth and then reciprocate it. But anyways, plug it into one, there's a value at zero, plug it into ten. What's log base ten of ten? A one, right? So before any transformations are happening, we know a log looks something like this. And then whatever transformations are imposed on it, you guys have your new mapping. Right, this one's a super easy transformation, I know that. But I would add a five to just my x's and then my y's. Right? Pretend I did though. Pretend I had a two here and a plus three here. Pretend that. My y's would be steeper by and then move up three. So I would take all these parent values and I move them right, five. I'm not gonna worry about the decimal one. Um, zero plus three. Is this five? Right? So everything would be over five, that's my new asymptote. And everything would be kinda like vertically stretched out, so I'd have a value here at six, three now. And I've had a value clear out at fifteen, like five, right? So everything moved up and slightly stretched out, if that makes sense. So if you were asked one, you think you could kinda fumble?
Yeah.
Do you think it was okay? So starting with a parent's key, and I would always go with just whatever the base is. Like a base, three of x, and just start there, and then you can express. Now that he's done, I'm gonna open it, because it's hot when the sun comes down on this side. Okay. My kids are home and probably saw that our chicks, I have chicks, I have chicks. Let me hurry and answer this. Hey sweetheart. I came home at lunch. Okay. Um, okay, let me look at one. I think I did wanna set up a couple partials, uh, partial fractions. Um, do you guys wanna hurry and do a log? We haven't done it, but maybe we practiced it enough. Yes, you've practiced it enough, or yes, do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if there's a log, please make sure it's condensed before you convert. You do have to condense before. What would you guys do, what's the property you can do with logs when they're separated by add and subtracts? They condense to multiply and divide. It doesn't work when like a log is divided or whatever, you can't. You make sure, you guys are careful with those type of properties. Um, so this can condense- Um, so this can condense to a log base three of what? Very good. Now,
Do you distribute the X or?
We can. Not a must at this stage, but yes, we can. Okay, now what?
Then you take it down as far?
Yep, you got to convert, oops, convert, so that you can drop the log essentially. So this will become a quadratic. So whenever a log, if, if stuff is stuck in a log, you convert to an exponent. If stuff is stuck up in an exponent, you convert to a log. Just remember that. Um, so I have zero equals X squared plus two X minus three. This factors to what? And if it didn't factor, we could do quadratic formula, but this one does factor. What does it factor to? Looks like it's a positive three and then you said a negative one, right? Now we gotta be careful because things with restrictions have what type of solutions? They do. So don't just circle and walk away because things with like radicals, denominators, and logs, because they have restrictions, you always want to check those, those ones. Polynomials, yeah, you still want to check them, but they don't have extreme solutions, so you may not run into it as much. So do either of these not work when you try it in there? Like if I try a log and I plug in a negative three, what would happen if I tried that on my calculator? Logging a negative, remember the basic parent function for a log that they always had asymptotes at? Zero. Their domain was always above zero. So what am I not allowed to do? Log negatives. Cannot log negatives. So we would realize this was actually trees. Okay, come try it. Alright. Okay, how do you put something in your calculator if you do want to check stuff? Like if this was a log base three of say two. Do you guys remember how something goes in the calculator?
Log two over log of three.
It is, yep. Log of two over a log of three. Great, okay. Um, I think if you guys go through your quizzes in your past tests, you'll probably be really good, like cover every, like we've gone over a ton. Um, you guys, still another table one? We've expanded on one of our quizzes. Are you guys good with that? Okay, we've solved exponents over and over. Do you guys done doing those ln ugly things? Or do you need another? You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Turn, ln both sides, move it. Do you guys remember those, that process? Um, let me just double check. I think I'm almost to the last exam here. Um, we've done the F of G's, we've done compositions. Oh, I just practiced the change of base formula, right? How would that go on my calculator? Good, log of eighty over log of twenty-five. And I just really wanted a difference quotient. Is there one, not difference quotient, a partial fraction. That's what I wanted to get to. And then a system, maybe like we do one that's a system. We haven't really gone over those, but those are more recent, so I feel more comfortable with like skipping them, but. If you were asked to solve, do you guys remember that you like isolate? What if it's not a condensed problem, but it's a solving? What would you guys get rid of first on eleven? Minus the four, good. Divide by three, then do your what? Around the world, the exponent, good. You guys are good. Okay. These are just more half, oh, there's your half-life, Kayden. Half-life of a substance is five thirty, so they're using this as a what this time? The condition. So they want you to do it to find um, K or R. So like this one, you would use that information to say, even if you don't use the twenty, right? You could just say one to down to one half. And you could say, what's the rate if the half-life is five thirty? And then you'd find your rate and then use it for the rest. Okay, good. Okay. Um, so I don't love that we didn't get to a partial fraction or a system. Do you guys want to work on a quick row elimination one, which I would love? They probably, um, they probably are just gonna make you solve a system. And that you, I'm hoping they let you pick for those of you who like Kramer's rule, but those of you who don't like Kramer's rule, really row operations is best. Um, if it works to do elimination substitution, great, but if they do specify you have to do this, you gotta make sure you can do it. Do you guys want to practice anything or is it so recent that you're fine?
I don't know.
You do? Do you know the operations? Good. If you know the operations well enough, great. Those of you who don't, I would review this question um, and make sure you can do systems, those of you watching. Determinants, we, you know, remember the determinant. So what would this one be? Good, you times si- you times this one? So negative twelve minus a positive eight, right? So did you guys get negative twenty in your head? Sorry, I'm, what's that? Perfect. Okay, Kramer's rule. I don't think they'll force you to do Kramer's rule for sure. Alright, let's just end with a partial fraction and go home. Do you guys feel okay about that? Okay, what would be this partial fractions setup?
A over X plus two.
Good, you're saying A over X plus two, because it's linear. Please put a plus sign between. I've seen people kind of be lazy on that. Okay?
B over X plus one.
You're saying another, another constant over another linear. You just said X plus one.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Why are we doing BX plus C? Like why does that one, why don't we need it?
Because your X is not squared.
Good, the factor, good. The factor is linear and the X is not squared. The outside is squared, that means it's a repeated. And then are you guys confident to do the partial fraction after that? Like the clearing or do you want to go through the whole process? Go through the whole process or? You are good. Perfect. If people at home need to, then maybe come up with this question. If anybody watches this video, the people here are fine. Don't want to waste my time anymore. Okay, anything before I shut the video down? Let me double check my checklist. I have a checklist for myself.
Could we do this one on the quiz?
I would love to do that. From the test?
Yeah.
You want to do this exact one?
Yeah.
Okay. So a nonlinear is being asked. So did we solve? We did a partial, looked at it, systems, even and odd. Um, the only thing I feel like with uh, with uh, sequences is going over the different types and when you plug it in and, um, do you guys remember what it looks like if you have to plug into explicit versus a recursive? That's the only thing I wanted to maybe look at before I do this, Kayden. Where's my sequence things? Oh, there's one. Hey, that's perfect. Let's, that's a good way on that one. So back when we did sequences, we the whole time have been finding like A sub N is whatever and then we came up with our own nth term or we gave you nth terms and so these ones are like a direct, like let's say it's like two N plus one, they're like direct plugging in. So if you want the first few terms, you get to plug them in. And then I just want to make sure people, we had it circled back, because I don't, did I quiz on a recursive? I don't know. Oh, we didn't get a quiz on these because we didn't have time. So how would you guys be forced, if this is the rule, and I asked you to find a fourth term, what would you have to do?
Did we have to find C three?
We have to do C two, C three before you can do C four. You can do all of them. So C two is?
Negative two times four.
Very good. What do we get? Negative seven. And then C three is negative two times negative seven, which is what, fifteen? So now I can do C four, which is negative two times fifteen. So as long as you guys remembered that this was all recursive stuff, then, I mean, that you always use a prior term, then you guys will be great on anything with sequences. That was my last note to myself, with sequences and systems. Okay, the last question that we want to go over and that we have to be done today is um, nonlinear systems, okay? And the specific one is from the most recent Weaver State exam. So we want you to solve square root X plus a Y and then this. So when I see something like this, the first thing I, the process my mind goes through is I double check that things I'm sorry. Come on. I double check that things um, are not linear, so I don't want to use a matrix C. Then I double check that I can't do elimination. And when they are not the same degree, and a radical and an X are not the same degree, you, you just, you can't use a limitation. I'm having people do weird things like, let's just square it. I'm like, square what? Like you can't, you have to do it both sides. Like people are doing some weird stuff. So when you guys feel like they're completely different forms and there's nothing else you can do, you have to just substitute. It's just the long, ugly substitute. This one wasn't bad though. A lot of people freaked out. Did I copy that right, Kayden? Not a negative Y? So I would have solved for Y. I think that would have been the easiest thing to solve for. And then I do what with it? Plug it in. So I get to come down here and say X squared minus four and then I'm gonna plug in a negative square root X into this part right here. You do have to take into consideration, um, I don't know, I was gonna say something about domain, but I'm just gonna continue with this. So when I go to simplify this out, um, this stays X squared, this stays a four. I can do this as a negative one, that is all squared, but also a square root X that is squared. Does that make sense, everybody? How many times does this come up here? So that would turn out to be a positive and then my X just gets to come out of the radical. So it's technically a negative four X. So I know that negative kind of freak people off, but this is typically just X squared minus four X and it's a quadratic. And so usually a system will turn out this way. You're either solving by square rooting and getting plus and minuses or you're factoring and getting something that's quadratic. And that's usually what the nonlinear is a turn to be, is this. If you want to ask, some, some people who did the quiz five for me, um, are messing up on the nonlinear and they were supposed to get four answers. So if you remind me when we start, I'll just remind people like this is what happens if you want me to. I also don't want people to think I'm emphasizing certain things because I can't really do that, but if you're concerned enough, you can go over somewhere. So from here, you guys would just finish, right? Are you guys confident after this? Yeah. So, um, just for people at home, we got X equals six and X equals negative two. Being careful, because when you try to plug them both in, what happens? That one doesn't work for real numbers, so we didn't really worry about it. But now I come back here and I plug in my six.
So you don't have to put it as an I, you don't have to solve for that at all?
Not when we're solving like physical solutions. When you guys are solving systems, you are physically trying to find when things cross each other. And so if we are asking for zeros, no, we don't, we don't really care. Because that imaginary one is not a physical place that we see things cross. So, um, so we would have said six comma negative square root of six. Okay, you guys are awesome. I'm gonna hurry and load the video and load these notes and then I gotta get to a practice. You guys, thanks for coming because you guys-